Well, we're ready. Let's go ahead. This is the twenty-sixth meeting of the one hundred and forty-fourth Council of the Corporation of the City of St. Thomas. Our meeting here is a special meeting tonight on the draft action plan. Any members with any disclosures of interest? Seeing none, and I'll recognize that Councilor Peters is online with us tonight. We have no minutes, so we'll move along. Madam Clerk?
Council will now resolve itself into committee in the hold to deal with the following business. First committee this evening, the only committee, is strategic direction and development. First item relates to the two thousand and twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-seven strategic plan draft action plan. I have a motion that report CMO zero seven dash twenty-four relating to the two thousand and twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-seven strategic plan draft action plan be received for information and for the council be requested to provide initial feedback and input to the draft action plan and direct administration to finalize the two thousand and twenty-four to two thousand and twenty-seven strategic plan action plan for full council endorsement at a later date.
Peters?
Thank you. Moved by second, moved by Councilor Peters, seconded by Councilor Baldwin-Sands.
Questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Your worship, before we take the vote, perhaps if the city manager could proceed with his PowerPoint presentation?
That would be a really good idea.
Thank you.
City Manager, you see how fast the meeting could have been?
Maybe, maybe I should have just stayed in my seat.
Yes, but it wouldn't be as exciting if we didn't let you share with us first.
I'm glad to hear that. Thank you, and your worship and members of council. I'm pleased to, this evening, provide a short presentation on the, the, the action plan that's related to our strategic plan. My presentation will be brief. I want to just chat a little bit about the process that, that the city's gone through to arrive at this moment. I also want to just review what I believe are some kind of, some of the, what I believe are critical steps, critical actions in this action plan, although certainly not all of the actions. There's a lot of them. And I'll just chat a little bit about what the next steps are before we finalize this plan, and then how do we move the plan into reality? I do want to take a few minutes and just mention that the leadership team is here with us this evening. They'll be able to speak to all of the individual actions contained within the plan. And I do want to acknowledge their work in bringing this plan forward. It's a very ambitious plan, and I think they, they showed a lot of foresight and a lot of creativity in bringing these actions forward. I also want to acknowledge Taylor, Taylor Mooney here, who is the Strategic Initiatives Manager, who I think has shepherded this process and got us to this point tonight. So with that, I'll just briefly talk about the process that, that the city has gone through forward, and I'm late to this game, I'll acknowledge, but, but can certainly, can give a quick highlight of it. Back last year, just a little later than, than about a year ago, the community was engaged with the intent of bringing forward a refresh to the strategic plan. And over the course of the fall, an environmental scan was done to have a look at what, what are the strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, threats, and, and, and initiatives facing or challenges facing the municipality. Data analysis and decisions were conducted over that course of that time as well to bring forward a draft strategic plan, which was developed over the, the, the late winter and into the, into early two thousand and twenty-four. And then a strategic plan was put in front of council in February of two thousand and twenty-four, and it was approved. And that, that plan was circulated as part of this report. And so the strategic action, the staff were then directed to go forward and over March to, to this time presently, they, the staff worked on a strategic action plan. And again, I've joined this process late in the, in the process, but, but have been pleased to have been a part of it and to have been contributed to the, to the last pieces of it. So just a really quick reminder of what our strategic plan has. Overarching, it has a mission, a vision and a mission, and I won't read these, but these, these provide us with a broad goal as a municipality. And then we, we've also drafted values of trust and accountability, inclusivity and respect, collaboration and teamwork, learning and innovation, and safety and well-being. So these are, again, the high level goals, the high level vision, and the high level of what we want our municipality to be and how we want it to conduct itself. At a, at a, at a, at a more active level, we have two strategic pillars, the first being excellence in all we do, the second, as a prepared and resilient team. These basically are the, what I call, high level objectives of how we want our municipality to, to act over the, over the, over the remainder of this term and probably into the next term. And then subsequent to both of those two strategic pillars are a set of, of strategic priorities, and I won't read them here. You're, they're, they're on the screen and you're familiar with them, but they really then drive us, what, what are we specifically going to do? What, how are we going to aim ourselves to get these, to, to achieve these strategic pillars and to achieve that vision, mission, and, and that we talked about earlier? So the, how the strategic plan works is, I mentioned, the vision, 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 mission and values, a set, a high level goal. We then set more, more, more concrete objectives and priorities through the strategic pillars and the strategic priorities, and then we use those to build an action plan, and that's why we're here tonight to talk about that action plan. So the action plan is a list of tangible actions that we will use to achieve our strategic plan. It serves as a work plan for both council and staff, so it's a set of actions that we're going to take over the next three to five years to, to, to achieve this plan. And it helps us to set annual priorities, both in around work planning, but also around budgeting. And finally, it creates a system where we can, we can measure performance. So we have now hard actions. A lot of them will have, have metrics attached to them, and we'll be able to record and analyze and bring those, those, those metrics and that data back to council to show that how we're doing. The, the, the action plan, as I, as I mentioned earlier, it evolved over a number of sessions with the city's leadership team, starting in March. And it was, it was a collaborative process, and certainly I've, I've been part of the, the last few sessions, but the sessions before as well. It took a lot of collaborative input, discussion amongst the team members, and we really, I do believe we built consensus, so the team is very, I think, united that this is a good plan. We finalized it over the last couple of weeks, and I mentioned it, it was a living document right out until the day we released it. We were still making adjustments to it, and I believe we've still got a few adjustments left. I've got a few notes that I'd like to, to clarify on the final plan, and we're looking for your feedback tonight as well, which we'll chat about. So we believe it's an ambitious plan, and we, the leadership team believes it'll help the city achieve our, our vision of a brighter future. I don't want to go through the, all of the, there's, there's, there's three hundred lines in this plan. It's a pretty, pretty big document, but I do want to talk about a few of them that, that I personally believe are important for our municipality to transition from, you know, I think we're transitioning into a large municipality, and I think these are critical steps. We're going to need to do that. A couple of them around public safety and community well-being would be the fire prevention strategy that's noted, a refresh of the Parks and Recreation Master Plan, and a needs assessment for, needs assessment for Recreation Wellness and Aquatics Facility. Around growth and sustainable community growth, we've got an update to the strategic, the, the city's official plan, the completion of a transportation master plan, and a feasibility plan for a new library branch. Around economic development, we've got the completion of the Yarmouth Yards Industrial Park, the development of strategic core areas as a goal, and an under, to undertake a master development plan for the St. Thomas Airport. To create an accessible, equitable, accessible and inclusive community, we've, we've proposed to do a diversity, equity and inclusion plan, and this would be a large plan. It would satisfy both the needs of the community as well as our organization. In terms of creating housing for everyone, we've got the continuation of the Coordinated Community Response Program, the release of our, our, the request for proposals, or RFPs, for housing opportunities to be developed on city-owned lands, and the implement, implementations of the recommendations of the Housing Needs Assessment, which council will be seeing later this, this summer. And around environmental stewardship, we've got a number of initiatives in the plan, but the big one, I believe, is the development of a corporate climate change mitigation strategy, and that'll help us become a net zero municipality either by or hopefully prior to the two thousand and fifty target. In terms of our second strategic pillar of a prepared and resilient city, around effective governance, we've proposed to do an under, a governance process review, which would review how we go about governance here as, as a council, and, and whether there's, there's opportunities for improvement in that, as well as a communications and corp, and corporate communications and community engagement strategy. In terms of creating a passionate and engaged city team, we're proposing to develop a leadership development and succession strategy, as well as the, the creation of a people plan around financial accountability and continuous improvement, and I chatted about this a couple, a couple of weeks ago at another meeting, to do a twenty-year comprehensive financial plan for the municipality, which would bring all of the components of our financial, financial aspects of our organization, development charges, taxes, rates, all into one single document, and show how we're going to be financially secure over a twenty-year period. Around progressive technology and data, we've proposed to develop a customer service strategy so we can gauge people who have, who have, who've interfaced with the municipality, see how their experience was, so we can find improvement, as well as there's a commitment to do a number of network and cybersecurity investments. We live in a, a very technologically driven world, but it's also a technologically driven world with a lot of risk to it, so we want to make sure we're, we're ready for that risk. And finally, to build reciprocal partnerships, there's proposal to update the tiered response, mutual aid and automatic aid agreements through our, for our emergency services, as well as the career, we're proposing to explore creating a community, community relations coordinator to help build volunteer capacity in the municipal, in, in, in our community. And then the last thing I wanted to mention, and was noted in the report, is that we are proposing to do an annual report and a performance scorecard. We'll be working on that more over the coming weeks to develop, what does that, that metric and data set look like, so that we're recording the correct data and that we can bring it back to you on an annual basis to show how our municipality is performing, where we need to improve, is the plan actually making a difference in terms of the, the metrics that we track? In terms of next step, we're looking to see this plan approved over the course of this summer. We want to hear from council, council's thoughts on it this evening, and then our, my proposal would be to bring it back to one of our two meetings, depending on where we get tonight, over the course of the summer, and have a, have it, have it approved, at least, I would say, a principled approval this summer. And then we would do a, a external communication. I think the plan has been released externally, but we, the, the strategic plan, but we'd want to release the entire package to externally through various, various channels, as well as making sure all of our key stakeholders have a, have a, have a definitive copy of it. We want to do an internal communication over the late summer and early fall, so that all of our employees have a chance to sit down and understand the plan, know where they fit into it, and make sure that they, we've got total buy-in across the organization. And then we need to implement it, and that's an ongoing process, and there's a lot to that, and I've just noted a few things here, but we want to embed this plan into our internal and external communication, so we're always referring to it. This is our work plan as, as a municipal organization. We want to make sure people understand that, and we want to make sure that you, as a, as a council, see it regularly as you're seeing reports, so we're proposing to put in all of your council reports, a strategic plan context session, so you can see it every, every week when you're here making decisions. We'll be certainly using the plan as we develop the two thousand and twenty-five and future budgets, and we'll be pulling all of these actions into the staff performance management program, so that all of the staff work plans now contain these actions, so we don't forget about them. And finally, as I mentioned, we'll be doing a regular annual report and performance scorecard. We'll be developing that over the next couple of months. We haven't, we haven't got that far yet. We want to see, make sure that we've got the actions locked down, and then we'll be developing the data recording and the data management that we need to follow to make sure that we've got lots of information that we're collecting so that we can report annually to you, so. So that's my presentation, your worship. As I mentioned, I'm here to answer questions. The team is here, and we'll, we'll leave it to you as you, how you want to take us through the, the document this evening. If there's any general questions you wanted to ask, I'm happy to do that, or I can return to my seats. Thank you very much.
Okay. Great. So before you go anywhere, we'll do any general questions from the presentation Michael just gave us. Councilor Baldwin-Sands, Councilor McCully?
I noticed the date that you were talking to all of the management staff on this, so my question goes back to our meeting back in May, where we received the update from Watson in regards to the growth to the city. Was that taken into consideration when you provided the final document? Thank you.
City Manager?
Through, through your worship, yeah, that, 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 that report, I think we had that report before that, and I think, I know I saw it early in my, my tenure here, so it would, it would be included. It would have been considered as we develop the plans.
Councilor McCully?
Thank you. So a lot of work obviously went into this, three hundred initiatives or action items, so thank you to the leadership and teams and their staff for, for putting this together. Not really a comment, or not really a question, more of a comment. It makes sense that a lot of the ones that you have identified have to do with planning, considering the growth that we're going to see in our community. So a lot of the, the action items that we see here, you know, the top twenty-two, whatever they are, are based on planning. There are some that really don't have, what I would like to see is, I'd like to see some measurables, and some of them are measurable in here, but for example, develop strategic core areas. What does that mean? Like, how can that be measured? Similar to housing, you know, a commitment to implementing the recommendations of the St. Thomas Housing Needs Assessment. What does that look like? How can we measure that? So that's what I would like to see, is something that's very measurable that we can, you know, how are we doing? And then the other number of initiatives, I think they're definitely important, but there are some in here that are ongoing or annual, and do they really need to be part of the strategic plan, or are they supporting the strategic plan? So those are just my comments.
City Manager on?
Through your worship. I, I think those are great questions, and, and certainly I've considered them as well. You know, I think, you know, in terms of the, the, I'll start with the, 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 the second question. You know, I, I think that, that measure, the second question was, the first question was measurability, right? So, you know, there's, there's two ways to measure a strategic initiative. Does it have a hard stop to it? You know, is it, is it a strategy that we're going to do? And so we listed those. If it's, if it's got a, you know, if it's, if it's a, a strategic initiative, like creating an equity, diversity and inclusion plan, we've included it as, okay, plan done at this time. But then there's the, the, what I would call the software measurement. These are things that we're going to go away and think of, and this is about, what are the results of that plan? So do we have, do, do, do we, do we, do we circulate community regularly and ask them that they feel like it's an inclusive community, and if the, that reporting is positive, then, then, then we've got, that's, that's another measurability? We don't have those listed yet, because we haven't really given thought to those. So, so I think we've got hard measurable targets, or hard measurable activities in this plan for the, for the, for the initiatives, but then there's another set of measurable, measurables, data and, and metrics and reporting and, and, and sampling that we're going to have to do as a municipality to determine whether these things are working. So, so hopefully that answers your question. And the second piece was, you had a second question there?
Two on here that don't really have a measurable. It's more of a statement, right? So it's just tightening that up to, you know, how, what are the, then the measurables? And it wouldn't, these aren't necessarily soft. I think there's an opportunity here to put some hard numbers around.
Sure. So like some of the on, the question is about the, like some of the ongoing or the, the, the broader initiatives that we've laid out. I, I think it's good to have them in the plan, and certainly we're open if council would like to see some of those pulled back, but, but to me, they, they, they remind us that we're, we're doing some of these activities. They're, they're already, some of them are already underway. Some of them we know we're going to do. They don't have hard stops to them. They don't, they don't have, have really, they're, they're not something that we're going to deliver to you as a package. They're going to be ongoing activities, but I think it's good, A, that we identify them because they're important. Secondly, that we report on them every year, so we come back to you and say, we're still doing this. It's still working. And, and I think lastly, that we can use those to fuel those, those, that data gathering and metrics that we're going to start talking about, or we're going to start keeping, so that we can report those things back to you every year, so.
Councilor Herbert?
Thank you, worship. Thank you for this. It's very interesting. This is very aggressive for council when I look at all the things that are on there. There's a lot of work for the managers to stay on top of. I went through and I counted eighty-one not started, and here we are in July, not started, and there were seven started, and actually eighty in progress. So there's a lot going on, a lot to do. Well, one error I thought maybe, and this is just my opinion, we were weakened, is the climate. Climate's changing major. If, if, I'm sure you realize that, or maybe you don't realize, that two thousand and twenty-three was the worst year ever for tornadoes throughout North America. And I think in two thousand and eleven, Des Moines, Iowa, had a two hundred mile an hour hurricane or tornado go right down their main street, devastated it. So, so that my, my, my comment would be, we talked a little bit about climate, two, two point three point one and six point three point one, but I don't really see an action plan. If we sit here now, you know, tornado came down Talbot Street, where would we be? I mean, are we really prepared for something like that? And I think we need to be prepared for it. I, I know the, I don't know when meetings are. I'm sure the fire and the police and the ambulance are all involved, but I, I would like to see some feedback on just actually, what would we do if something that, that devastated our city? How prepared would we be? And, and it would be nice to have an action plan developed in a classroom, and then nice to have one a mock exercise. And I don't really see that in there. Maybe I missed it, but the climate is a major thing now in the world, and it's just getting worse, and it's not going to be any better. I believe there was a hurricane, or a hurricane tornado came through south of St. Thomas in the year two thousand, ripped out a couple houses down by Union and trees, but we do get high winds now, but who knows what's going to happen. But anyway, I'd like to see something a little bit more addressing climate and, and just very couple little points that were just kind of indicated climate changes. So anyway, so thank you very much. That's my comment.
City Manager?
Certainly, and I, I think, I think we've got both of those addressed in, in the plan. So the first, the first piece, in terms of what are we going to do as an organization about climate change? So we have included the development of a climate, a climate change mitigation strategy, and what that looks like, I'm not sure. It could have a lot of components. Yeah, so it's in there. It could have a green energy component. It'll probably have an, an energy savings component, and Kevin, if you want to sign in, or just let me try it. It could have a lot of components, you know, about, about the electrification of our fleet, the electrification, the provision of electrification system, so that other people can charge their vehicles, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Have all of those pieces. So I think, I think we'll, I think that's a critical initiative. Most municipalities are or should be developing these kind of strategies. What can we do as, as a municipality, as an organization, as also as a community, to, to reduce our, our production of carbon, reduce our environmental footprint, and, and, and slow down the, the impact of climate change? From an emergency response perspective, though, I've, it's also included, and I don't have my sheet. It's, it's back at my desk, but I did include, we did include a, a piece about the continuing ongoing emergency management compliance. So one of the things we do as, as a municipal organization is we annually, we have an emergency management plan. We have to make sure that we're compliant with that plan, so we have to send a compliance report into Emergency Management Ontario, I think, chief, to make sure. We have to go through a number of things. We have to release public information. We have to do an annual exercise, so, so as, as, as a municipal team, and we have to make sure that our emergency operations center is operating. So we have a lot of little objectives. I'm very passionate about this, and then the chief and I have actually had some discussions about that. We do have a, an exercise book. So I think both of your concerns are addressed. We do have a, a proposal to come back with a, with a mitigation strategy, and we also have, have noted that we, we need to be emergency management ready, because to, to your point, climate emergencies aren't going to, aren't going away. They're actually going to increase. So most of the, and certainly in my, in my experience as, as a municipal leader, most of the exercises that we've done for emergency, for emergency management compliance have been climate focused, snowstorms, windstorms, tornadoes, things like that, floods, and I think you'll, you'll continue to see it. These are the emergencies we're probably going to be dealing with going forward. Did either the chief or director of, of, of environmental services want to add?
No, no.
Thanks, Senator, manager. Through your worship to Councilor Herbert. So right now, we're, on Thursday, we're meeting with the county and all the CEMCs and our field officer from the Provincial Emergency Operations Center. We're going through significant weather events. So as you said, our weather events are changing, and what we do and how we plan. So we, we constantly get updates from the POC or the Provincial Emergency Operations Center on what we can do. So they're, they're supporting us in anything we need. We're, we have our operation center, this thing. We're working on a secondary operation center that's located on Talbot Street also. So we're doing exercise. This year's exercise will be a little bit different, but we have to meet the compliance stuff, so we have compliance with all the emergency management stuff. So like the city manager said, we, we're meeting those through Emergency Management Ontario, and this year we have to do, actually, we've done tabletop exercises, so this year we have to do an actual exercise. But I think we're going to do it with, instead of just the city, we're going to do it with our, our county people too, because if something happens in the city of St. Thomas and we can't get trucks around, we need to reach out to what was in the strat plan with our mutual aid agreements, automatic aid agreements, and all our tiered response partners.
Councilor Herbert, a follow-up?
Yes, just a follow-up question. I am planning and attending the session on Thursday. That's the tornado thing all day, but the point, not my point, but the comment that I was making about the two that were mentioned, two point three, it says not started, not started. Does that mean nothing's updating or nothing being done, or just not started yet? Because we're six months down the road, and to me, that's a key. That's a big one for me, not started, so.
So we constantly, so saying it hasn't started, it's, it's always a, a work in progress. Each year we have to do something. So we haven't done our annual exercise, so that exercise hasn't started this year. The plan is in place to, to do it. That's been done. So if we're saying something hasn't been started for emergency management, it's something ongoing every year, and we get, we have a checklist that we send to the Emergency Operations Center and the Provincial Emergency Operations Center, and we're graded, and if you don't check all the boxes, then your city isn't compliant, and the mayor gets a copy every year of saying, congratulations, your city has me compliancy.
Sorry, sorry. Just one last question. So when you work on the emergency management, do you work with the surrounding people, Malahide, Southwood? Do they all attend something that, because obviously they'd be involved. I didn't know. Anyway, that's my question.
Through your worship, back to Councilor Herbert. Absolutely. We constantly, when we have our county chief's meetings, and we have county chief's meetings every month, we talk about our emergency strategy. What happens if our radio system, we, and we talk and go through our radio systems, our, our call out for trucks. Who's sending what if what happens? And, and we do that on a monthly basis. So for saying that this not start, it's actually an ongoing thing, so.
Kevin?
Thank you, worship. Councilor Herbert, there are some, I just want to name off a couple of the action items that address or touch on climate change, but would be captured through that climate mitigation action plan that the city manager was referring to earlier. So you mentioned EV charging station network. That's a conceptual plan that's in our transportation master plan. That's in progress. We're looking at maybe doing a feasibility study on micro mobility to move people to alternative modes of transportation, to lower our carbon emissions as a corporation or as a community, looking to develop a carbon emission calculator, for example, for our own carbon footprint as a corporation. Staff or administration and council have already adopted, you know, electric, electrification of our fleet, but how can we advance that further? What's an advanced green fleet strategy? What are some green development standards that we can implement to help with those impacts? We're undertaking a stormwater master plan right now, which will look to address some of the impacts of climate change in terms of the intensive, intensity and frequency of these rainfall events, and how can we better protect ourselves in the future? Do we need to change our design standards? What other measures do we need to put in place? So all of these things kind of wrap up into a larger climate mitigation strategy in the future. So some of these things are happening. Solar panel installations on the Joe happening later this year. So these are some of the things that are helping us reduce our impact or mitigate the impacts of climate change. Thanks.
Councilor Clark?
Thanks, your worship. I've got some general comments and then some specific comments, questions, maybe for later, but just on the city manager's portion, I kind of echo Councilor McCully's sentiments on the overall plan. I, you know, I commend staff for a very thorough, very thorough examination of the strategic plan priorities, maybe too, too much. So, and so I, for me, when I saw it, I was looking at, how do we, how do we make this more friendly for the general public, and how do we engage them? Because to me, it was kind of overwhelming to see the number of pages and the number of items listed. So I, I kind of concurred with the, or did concur with Councilor McCully in terms of those items that were ongoing and those items that were annual things. To me, that, they almost seem like the meat and potatoes of things that we do to make City Hall run and make the city run, and, and whether or not they should be edited out in some way, so that we take a look at, in our strategic plan, the new priorities, similar to what the city manager outlined on, on, on his slide of, of kind of priorities. So that, that would just be my general comments, and I have some specific questions about some of the, the individuals.
When we're, we're done with the questions for the city manager, we have a kind of an overwhelming question to ask you as to next step, so I hope we will catch you in there. Councilor Wookiee?
Thanks, your worship. Um echoing a little bit of what uh Councilor Clark was saying, moving on from that. I mean, as a former educator, you you are presented with a course objectives, and sometimes you have like a hundred and twenty objectives in a course, right? And, you know, young teachers come to you and say, how am I supposed to do this? And you say, not all objectives are created equally, right? And I think it would be a very interesting activity for us to actually kind of rank some. Because and I I mean specifically, like my colleague sitting around the horseshoe here, but I would love to see what the the directors think. You know, like where where are we as elected officials, as the governance side? Where are we in terms of how we look at it versus how the directors look at it? Because it's very important that we know what you guys think are the priorities and what's important to you. So and you need to know what's important to us, and I, again, not all objectives are created equally. So I don't know if that, I think that would, from my from my lens, I think it'd be a really interesting exercise for the people that are in this room right here to do together sometime to look at those. And I think that would then generate a a list of like, okay, if if we think it's a very high priority, we as the governance side and the management side thinks a high priority, then it's a high priority, that's just the way it is. Just food for thought, and um I think that would be a worthwhile discussion someday over uh coffee and donuts, thanks.
City manager, and I may add to your thoughts.
About the coffee and donuts, or?
Well, that too, yes.
So I think, you know, along the last two comments, you know, one thing we could certainly do is we could go through a sorting exercise. And pardon me, repackage this, and we've talked a little bit about, you know, how we're gonna take this list and move it into some different formats. So it's more usable for us as a staff team. So so one thing we could certainly do, like I like the the having the big package of of activities because it helps me as a city manager make sure that the team is 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 focused on what we need to be doing. So it's a very effective work plan, it's a very effective work planning tool as it's laid out now. But um we could certainly go through and and do a sorting exercise and provide you with what we would call maybe the the core, you know, critical steps or critical actions that that the organization's gonna take in the next three to five years. And then the the ongoing activities that we're continuing going to, I think we should still track them, maybe making sure that we still have performance around them. But so that's that's certainly something we could do quite easily, and I think it might be, you know, might might address some of the concerns here, the the comments that we've had this evening. In terms of going through, you know, another exercise or review exercise, we're certainly open to that.
Councilor Baldwin Sands, and then I'll add.
Thank you, I too have further questions as we move along, um more specific to some of the topics that we are going to be hopefully discussing. I agree with um Councilor McCully with the ability to evaluate and measure, but also the constant feedback system. I'm also interested in knowing that. And the reason that I also asked the question about the Watson Report and how that updated everything is our ability as a municipality and as a city council to become a um a little more nimble or having to pivot or shift priorities sometimes is going to be able to be a a constant um requirement for this council to be able to do. I was wondering how you were going to address that in this report.
City manager?
Sure, I think if I understand the the question correctly is um probably the best of the best outcome of this will be uh council getting an annual or if you want a more frequent uh report on performance. Uh because I think that's one thing as 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 municipal organizations and lots of organizations, and we can we can we can commit to things and we kind of forget about them. So, you know, having this in front of you on an annual basis and seeing, allowing us to say, okay, we're we're on target with this, we're on target with that, we completed this. Oh, and here's some 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 metrics that we think are supporting that it worked. That's a good thing for you, it allows you to say, okay, this is this is good, we gotta keep on this course. It also allows you to say, it allows both of us, staff and council to 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 say something else big has come up and we need to, we need to deprioritize some of these things. So if we're not reporting on these things, maybe we just start doing something else, something big comes along, and we we start throwing a lot of resources at it. But we forget about these other things, and then people say, why didn't you ever do that? So at least if we're looking at it on a regular base, we can say, okay, we've actually moved the targets to this outside of the scope of this of this of of this strategic plan, we're not gonna get that initiative done uh because these other things have come in. So I think that's the probably the best outcome is that you've you've got a plan now, but you're also gonna look at it annually. So if we don't do that, we we don't know how it's performing, so I think hopefully that answers the question.
If I if I can just share from the chair, and I've shared with some of you, we've had some of these conversations. First of all, thank you to the city manager and to Taylor and to all of the directors for and their teams for getting us to this point. If you remember our last strategic plan, we did it about five years ago, and it was a great deal of um work. But also, well, I've seen these before, I remember Councilor Wookiee's words explicitly. I've seen dusty books on shelves before, and we and we made, if we're not gonna go look at it, then why are we writing it? And we made sure as a council that we we put forward the things that this council thought the community needed to do to grow smartly and made an action plan that is almost one hundred percent finished. I don't know if many other communities can do a strategic plan that well. This time, I want to thank all of our directors and the city manager for for bringing it forward in this fashion. Because one of the first things we found in our conversation about doing a strategic plan is our staff also wanted a role in that conversation. And this rolled up into this, yes, it's detailed, yes, there's almost something from every department, yes, there's ongoing things. And we will need to sort, and as we, I think the best way to kind of look through and sort it, in my opinion, is the first time we look at it wholly again. When when we say, okay, let's set it out there, let's set, um let's release the doves and see what happens. And when we go to look at the work that's accomplished in six months or a year, we'll know, okay, we need to tighten some more or take some some more away. Uh look, and I'm sitting here, and it's pretty easy to analyze that I think we've hit a sweet spot. Because we've got a couple of counselors saying there's way too much in there, and we can take away some of the ongoing stuff, and we can, or we maybe don't need to worry ourselves about it. And then we've got others that are saying, but wait a second, where did it say what we're doing on this topic? Where did it say what we're doing on this topic? So we're in a pretty sweet spot. So first of all, thank you, everybody who's put it to this point. Um I love the amount of work that's gone into it. I love the fact that it's taken maybe a step longer than it did the last time we did it because we asked our staff, we asked the people that are the 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 power behind this community to also give their input on what needs to be done departmentally and as a city as a whole, and what we should look like in the future. So first of all, thank you for that. Um and I just hope that this plan gets as much of the same completion as we move forward. But one thing we did last time, and it was a completely different consultant service, and we moved forward, and it ended up being very successful, is at this point, or long before this point, we ask council. And that's what we're doing tonight, is now here, we we've shared us what the employees of this city really would like to work on. We showed us what some of the citizen input we've had at some public meetings and other things about what we should do. Is there anything not in this plan from a great big gotta get done? From a from the council point of view, I've read through it, and boy, it's got some great big gotta get done stuff in it. I'm 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 pleased with what we're seeing, because we've been capable of doing great big things and 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 taking those chances. But I just wanna make sure, and even if we wanna go around kind of even one by one uh with 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 counselors and say, have you noticed standing in here that isn't in here? Not a good way to put it, but but I'll do it. Councilor Peters, I see your hand up first, and I always trust your advice, so please, go ahead on on that question or any other point you have.
Well, I I I'm not sure, your worship, whether you want me to, because I I have comments about a number of things i- in this that that I see are not mentioned that are either big ticket items or little small ticket items. Um you know, some blaring gaps that that I see of the word heritage not being mentioned anywhere in the in the report. So um I I I'm not sure how you 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 were looking at proceeding with this. Like I I could go through this right now, and you know, starting at priority one and jumping to one point two and having comments to make. So I'm looking for your direction of of how you want comments to be made on what's in front of us.
Well, if we're if we're talking about um I'll I'll try and rephrase what I just said, maybe it'll help. Is much of this action plan has a lot to do with the day to day activity of our staff and what they do for our community too. So I'm not trying to rewrite the work plan of each department as much as reinforce that they're sharing with us what they think is important. Um but I I guess if if you if if you have areas of this plan that you'd like to actually add things to, then by all means, let us know. Or as I suggested, perhaps the first time we review our plan, we'll find for certain where holes or faults are in it. But I also was asking, and you can answer this one either way, is also, is there any other great big plan? I know in here we talk about total roads re enhancement or asset uh tracking, and those are some of the great big things that communities have to do. Councilor Herbert asked us about emergency planning, and the fire chief shared with him that we do that. But it may not be in here because we do it pretty all day long, right? So is it, do should we write down everything in our action plan that each one of our employees does every day? And I would suggest not, right? Otherwise, all we're doing is writing job descriptions. And so this is more that prioritizing of the great big things we should do. Did that help, Councilor Peters, or did I just get to talk for a lot longer?
Um yeah, with with all due respect, worship, I think it allowed you the opportunity to talk a little longer because I, you know, I I could speak to emergency planning as an example that Councilor Herbert raised of when as we, when as we as a council are going to undertake a mock emergency planning exercise. You know, and 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 I could, but as I say, your worship, I I have points that I would like to discuss on a number, not everyone, but a number of uh the priorities that have been identified that I think I would rather, as I appreciate your comment that this is a go forward plan, but I would like to see some of these things identified or at least named now. And that we're not trying to add something in two months down the road, six months down the road. I'd rather see it at least from my own perspective, and you know, I I I'm not looking for staff to say, yes, it's in or no, it shouldn't be in. But I just need to get these uh points on the record as I've gone through this extensive list of things of things that in my mind are missing.
Okay, um I guess I'm better off going to you on those things than I am asking for the great big things. So, Councilor Peters, let's try some of the things that are not in the plan that you'd like to see or word changing or or whatever way we could go.
Well, I I'm I'm I don't, I, your worship, I'm happy to wait until any of my council colleagues have completed their general comments because I I heard uh Councilor Baldwin Sands say that she too had some specifics. So I don't want to uh take over on the specifics before the general comments are done, so I seek your direction.
Okay. Councilor Kohler?
Thanks, your worship. I I agree with a lot of the comments that are are said around here, and I know being involved in several master plans uh before, like I I kind of look at this, this, it's almost like I'm looking at an operational budget for every department, right? And normally, in business and what we've done here, you come out with specific things like asset management plan, address our asset management deficit. You don't really put all of this in here, you come up with that, but then the measuring part comes down to annual relining of the sewers, all the other things that are listed in here. But it's it's almost as if we're going through a line by line operational budget instead of a master plan from what we're doing because we're that specific, like a strategic plan, address our housing problem, that's the target. And then later on, as we're getting our reports back and our man and our KPIs that are coming from there, all of these are gonna show up that in this housing strategy, these are the things we accomplished. But if we actually are gonna sit here and debate every one of these things for three hundred line items that are in here, that that I don't think that's a real strategic plan.
Right.
It's what are we gonna address, what categories are we, emergency planning? Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna do that, and then they're gonna come back and say, here's the things that we're doing, here's the things that we've already accomplished. But I I think if if we get down into the weeds that I think I hear some of the people around the horseshoe talking about, we better book a few more meetings because we're gonna be here for a long time if we start addressing each individual item. Like for me, when when I look at this and it says continue implementing city waterman relining program, that's a that's an annual operational thing that goes into our addressing our asset management plan. I think we we almost have too much here, it's great work, lots of work and a lot of detail. But some of the things that are here should be coming back to us as action items that have been done to address our asset management plan and all those different strategies that we wanna look at.
Go ahead, city manager, and I'll add to it too, please.
Through you, uh your your worship, but I think it's a good good comment, and maybe it's just important to just remind ourselves where we are this evening. So this is an action plan, so the strategic plan is already done, and it it does have those 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 priorities, you know, it just says, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna ma- manage assets on an asset with an asset management philosophy. It 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 already contains those, so this this is the act, these are the specific things we, and you're you're correct, they they in a in a in a in a way, these are departmental operating plans, these are what I'm gonna build, I'm gonna use, you're you're basically, this is my work plan, and I'm gonna use this document to create the work plans for the for the for the group behind me here. So 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 we are into that into that that level. And I I I assume that that when when council decided how it wanted to go about its strategic planning process, there was a conscientious decision that you would, you know, have a look at the action plan to make sure that we we as staff had a plan on how we were gonna implement your strategic plan. But but I don't disagree that we are into operational planning here. And 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 again, if council, you know, doesn't wanna go through and debate this, but just, you know, I I'm open to whatever suggestions that the the that that council wants to propose tonight, whether we want to just uh throw out ideas that maybe we've missed uh in our in our in our operational planning, or if you just wanna get back to me with with your thoughts over the next few weeks, and we can bring back a subsequent report with a with some follow up, I'm open to any of those, your worship.
And and sorry, Councilor Clark, would you like to go?
Well, just my comments would be, I agree with Councilor Peters, this yeah, and Councilor Kohler, I guess there's I I think this is our time to talk about things, so let's talk about them. Uh if it takes two hours, it takes two hours, but um otherwise, we'll be back at another meeting and and looking at another plan. On the other hand, you know, I've got a few specific ones, but I don't have comments on three hundred. So I think your original idea of asking each of us if we've got anything to say about any of them that are missing or that we question why they're in there, then let's do it.
Okay, I'm I'm game to follow that route. But uh one of the thing, as I I tried to get done first, is is there any big thing missing? Right? And then, if you've got something specific in an operational plan, but we don't tend to sit here from a governance group and tell the uh tell the engineer how to build bridges. So if we want to build a bridge, we need to say that, right? But what color the railings are is someone else's job, that's how how I wanted to look at it. And so I really didn't wanna get three hundred steps deep in it. But from council's point of view, if you've got a bridge that needs to be built, tell us about it. Would you okay if I start that way? And and truly, if there's some other little things in there, as Councilor Peter said, if he's got a number of things, let's at least bounce them off. But this isn't of of, oh, five out of nine don't like it, so pull it out of the plan, I don't think. This is a plan, we're we're looking at seeing how successful the plan is in a totality. Councilor Wookiee?
Thanks, your worship, since you mentioned bridges, and um I will take my opportunity to say my two, literally two cents worth, and then I'll promise I'll stop talking. So so I'm gonna, I'm hopefully be an exemplar of doing this briefly and uh specifically. Uh two bridges, actually, funny you mention that. Um Burwell Road, um the Burwell Road is not safe for pedestrians, and and that's halfway operational, halfway strategic. Something has to be done with that that bridge to make it safe for people to cross. It's dangerous to go on your bike, it's dangerous to walk, let alone if you ever, unfortunately, you were in a wheelchair or you're not, you know, that's because it was never built for that. So I think sometime over the next five years, we have to come to terms with the fact that that's a major pedestrian uh uh active transportation corridor that it's it's dangerous, so that's number one.
So I might suggest that Wednesday night at the master transportation plan launch would be a great time to discuss that transportation issue.
Yes, and the second one is, and I said, I always said this kind of jokingly, but I and I'm and I'll, this is for Mr. Bray, and you know, this is a this could be very well within the parks master plan, uh park recreation master plan, and that's the idea of how we're gonna have a completely connected uh network of trails around the city, what's the what's the overall plan of that? Because I still believe that at the end of Because I still believe that at the end of Alma Street or Hughes Street, we need a pedestrian bridge which goes across the expressway to, to Combe, Brock and all those places above Waterworks Park to be part of that. But I will leave that for conversation to have Mr. Bray in terms of the Parks and Recreation Master Plan. Those are my two things, and I'm done.
Okay. Any other great big things? Councillor Clark, I know you've got one.
Sure. A couple, Valley View and Valley View. We haven't talked about anywhere in here unless it's implied in some of the senior programming things. So for, for one, we did mention at our earlier talks about enhancing the Valley View Day Program. We know that there's no provincial dollars at this time. But I think we still need to, to examine where we would put it and be ready when the dollars are there. So that's the first one. And then Valley View Expansion. If we're, we're talking about the needs of a city that is going to grow, as we've heard it's going to grow. We haven't got any plans in place for that expansion for the number of beds that we're going to need at Valley View. And that segment of the population is, is the fastest growing. So I think somewhere in the next, over the next five years, we need to be talking about Valley View and similar to what, the way we're talking about a rec center is being shovel-ready if there's provincial dollars or taking a look at, are we behind the eight ball in terms of a city our size, the number of beds that we have compared, compared to other communities? So I think that's, that's one that we need to talk about. And then one, I just had a question about its inclusion. Just because we did, a number of us did go to a workshop on 1.51, Champion, the Development and Implementation of the Planet Youth Icelandic Model in St. Thomas, Stowgan, Proactively Supporting Youth and Reaching Their Full Potential. And that's one that a number of people are going to be involved in, but it's a very expensive one. So if, if we were to implement that model in today's dollars, we're probably, as a city, looking at 1.5 to $2 million. So it's in our plan, and, and we're going to know that we've accomplished it because success based on the model's measurement and data collection. And the heading for measurement of completion is full implementation. So I guess my question is, are, are we aware of the cost involved, you know, to, for that program to be successful from the seminars that we spent our time at? It involves every student or every student in the municipality basically getting a voucher for $550 or $600 for recreational activities, music lessons, dance lessons, all that kind of stuff. So I guess my question is, it's a great model. It, it creates great results. It's worldwide, and it's proven. But by us including it there, are we aware of what we're actually committing ourselves to?
Thank you. I'll let Ms. Sheridan go first, and I have a fair amount of experience on this one too. So go ahead.
Would you like to go first?
No, you go ahead.
Okay, thank you through you, Mayor, to councillor Clark. So to get the project going, it is a combined amount of $30,000. And that allows us to apply for funds up to $750,000 to assist with the project in the community. It's also something that's going to AMO to request funds from the provincial government. So there is definitely work in progress to get a commitment from other levels of government. And I wouldn't expect that it would be to that degree from a municipal contribution.
And if I can, if I can just share, because as the chair or vice co-chair of the Community Safety and Well-Being Plan that we have, this has come to that, to there also. And, and Southwest Public Health is also kind of leading the charge on that model. So Ms. Sheridan is right, there's a request before AMO, a couple of ministers, but Minister Tabullo under mental health and, and addictions first, and to, to fund the Southwest Public Health, who is the collaborating partner in this on the action plan. That funding doesn't come, it doesn't happen. So.
Great. Well, that was just my clarification because it's a fantastic program. It's worked in every country that it's been, it's been tried in. And if we can get it off the ground, it's great, but it, it's expensive.
Right. We have reason to believe Minister Tabullo is very favorable in it. He visited Iceland. We're also knowledgeable that southwestern Ontario is not Iceland. And so we want to at least see whether it's possible for us to work with youth in the way that that's been looked at. And if the provincial government is willing to put that money forward, it's a great prevention method for youth addiction and youth mental health problems. So if it can happen, it can happen. But that's the request.
Any comments on Valley View from staff?
Right. I was going to go to city manager, to Michael, on comments on, on Valley View of the future.
Through you, your worship. You know, in terms of the, the day program, that's something that Mr., that Michael and I can, can take, take back. But we actually have had a discussion about Valley View Expansion. I think that's what we're looking for this evening. Do you want to see a feasibility study for Valley View Expansion in this plan? Or do you want to, do you want to kick that off to the next plan? Because these are, you know, that, there, there'll be some expense to that. So, so again, I think that's, that's exactly the feedback we're looking for this evening. It was a discussion that, that we had already, just in my short tenure here. It's obviously something that's been discussed, I think, you know, at this table in the past. So, you know, I think we can take that away, and I can bring forward in the, in the, in the, in the, in the next version of this plan, feasibility study of with, for a potential expansion or, or twinning a Valley View with, with, with a timeline on it.
I'm okay if we, if we, we've always thought that was a way forward. Any other big stuff? Councillor Baldwin Sands?
Thank you. For the things that are not in it, or?
Right, for the things that are not already in this plan. I'm looking for blue-sky thinking here. We've got a lot of big stuff in here, right?
That there is. I too had Valley View. I even said to Mr. Carroll on the way in, I didn't see anything for a Valley View Expansion in this master plan. So I did talk a little bit about that prior to coming in. Also, what I don't see enough in here is doctor recruitment. And we are talking about the relationship that we have currently with the county. But what we are finding more and more is doctors that are coming in to practice family medicine do not take over the large number of patients that previous doctors have taken on. We also have a number of doctors that are going to be retiring. So we need to have a very proactive plan to be able to address that. And I think any enhancements that we can do with that program, or any innovations that we can do with that program, or any supports threaded throughout, I think that that is something that we need to add to this. Also, I noticed with the support for wellness and active living, I didn't see anything in there about the relationships that we have been building with our two conservation authorities in the areas of tree planting, development of walking trails, species at risk, invasive species mitigation, natural enhancements, and partnerships that can happen with those volunteer groups. And of course, my big one has been and always will be with this report will be with the community center. I know that we have it discussed in there, but the big one is, is making sure it gets into the Parks and Rec Master Plan. We cannot move forward until we see that in the Parks and Rec Master Plan. We have been taking care of pieces at the committee level, but in order for us to go with the bigger pieces that we need to see happening, we need that into the Parks and Rec Master Plan. And maybe I can get some comments on, I see it when it is projected here, but thoughts from city manager about any updates in regards to that, or from Mr. Bray.
City manager, first of all, let's do those in order. So physician recruitment has been something that's really been on our, our plate, although it's not been on our budget. Do we have something in here that helps us address that in a different way or work with our partners?
Through you, your worship. So the physician recruitment program continuation of it is noted here. I think if, if it was council's wish to see it expanded, there is an opportunity to do that this fall. I think they're, they're going to do a symposium with the physician recruitment group. So I think this would be a time for council to say, look at, at opportunities to expand that program if, if it was, but noting that that may have some additional funds required in, in, in the longer term. So I think the second one was conservation authority relationships. I think that's a great comment. We can take that back. And if there's an opportunity to add some actions on how we could collaborate more with conservation authorities, that, that, that makes sense to me. And then in terms of the community center, it is noted as a, as a, as a subset of the Parks Recreation Master Plan. We do have a 2025, a Q3 2025 target date to do that because I think it is a fairly significant initiative, mostly around location selection. So I'm, I'm hesitant to move that up. I think we, we need to be realistic, but if council wanted to see that move up a bit, we could, we could aim for that. So, so we have included that, as well as a business case to support whatever comes out of the feasibility initiatives.
Okay. Councillor Peters, I see your hand, then I'll go to councillor Gibson.
Thanks, thanks very much, your worship. I'm just gonna start through my list because I'm assuming that we're at that point in the agenda.
Well, we're still looking for big things. Is there anybody left with a big thing?
For, I thought you were looking for comments on individual initiatives. I can wait then. Thanks.
Councillor Gibson?
Thank you, your worship. My first one is the library. I, I appreciate in the report supporting the initiatives that the library is doing, but they are landlocked. And I do believe with the growing community, a second, a second library, even if it's with a multiple-use building of some sort to keep the cost down. But I think we should really look at having a larger building. I've been there many times. It's full with children. You get 75 kids in there. And we could use another room that's, could hold another 75 on some of these programs that are coming. And we're growing, growing more every day when we're going in there that even today, I sent three people in because they got the new driver ed education. Try it out, test yourself. And yeah, they inquired. I said, get a card and you can, by all means, you can do it. So I know we do have things that they could do at home, but there's a lot of things that they need to go in to do right there. And it's the 3D printer, the scanning of t-shirts and everything. It's growing every day. Jess and Marlene and Darlene are very busy continuously every day with children and adults that go in as well. But I think we, we could use something a little bigger or same, similar size, but, but we do need another building. The other one I have concerns on is our cemetery. We really think, I think we really need to look at that because if we don't, I know Steve is on, on the board, and they're having difficulties. And yes, you know, they do get money. How, I don't know exactly how it works, but I think if we don't help them, I think we're going to end up having a, a $3 million year item on our plate every year and not just a yearly, money's going to them. And the other item is the art center. Another area, we have people coming in from bigger cities. They're looking for our culture. They're looking for that. And I think we need to I, it'd be a big expense, and we may not be able to do it right away, but I think Laura and them would really appreciate a bigger facility at some point. Thank you.
On any of those topics, city manager?
Through you, your worship. I think the, and I'll, I'll let the chief librarian come up and speak to the, to the questionable library. But in terms of cemetery and art center, those are great comments. We can, we can go away and consider whether there's some, some opportunity to explore those further. Yeah, the cemetery, I hadn't given that any thoughts. So I think that's a good, probably a good thing that we should be exploring.
Heather?
Thank you, through your worship.
It's so great to see you, by the way.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
It's great to be here. It's so, really, in terms of, you know, we've been talking about a branch. Our master plan identified that, you know, our building for the population is not large enough. But however, you know, it's hard to identify where that branch would be, and we obviously want to be as cost-effective as possible. And that is looking at partnerships. I mean, libraries have had all sorts of partnerships with housing, with schools, with fire stations, like they're all over. The sky's the limit. So we would be looking for partnerships and, you know, we are keeping our, our eyes open on the aquatic, possible aquatic center, whether we could be part of that. It's also to be noted that, you know, library branches don't just have to be microcosms of like, you take our big building and you make it a smaller version. So right now, we're going out and we're looking at what that could look like. So it might just be all technology. Sometimes there are branches that don't have staffing in them. So there's all sorts of different possibilities for this. And so we want to be ready to respond to our community and in whatever place we end up. So I hope that answers your question.
Well, thank you. I'll let councillor Gibson follow up.
Your worship, one more item, and that was the senior center. I was wondering if there would be an indication, of any indication or help with their being also landlocked, if we could build up instead of, so that could be a consideration. Sorry about that.
I didn't know there is a requirement for more space at the senior center. Okay?
Through you, your worship. I believe there's an item that we, you know, we continue to work with the senior center. And I think that's the opportunity, just in discussions with them, if, if there, if there is some potential or some need for expansion or, or some further support, we can certainly bring those forward at the time.
And am I, I'm not, I'm just pointing out that I think library expansion is one of our action plans. All right, so.
Through you, your worship. Yeah, it's included as a, there's a feasibility study as a, for, for a library expansion was put forward.
So these will, I mean, not all feasibility studies will also be something that we end up doing, but we need to know if it's an area we want to work on. And as our, our department head has said, there's different versions of what that might look like, but that's why we do the study and, and do the feasibility. Any other big things? Councillor Clark?
Not a big thing, but just maybe a caution to councillor Gibson, who was that the, the items that were mentioned are not city entities. They're all outside bodies that we give grants to. So maybe you're talking about the grant process itself. But I would just be careful that we, we don't start talking about, you know, organizations that we don't, that we don't own or that we don't run.
And I don't disagree, councillor Clark, and some of what else has been talked about tonight is sometimes outside of our scope. This council will have to decide if we bring it into our scope, but I know how, how responsible this council has been not to do that. Anything else big? Councillor McCollough and then councillor Wookiee?
I wouldn't say, thank you, your worship. I wouldn't say it's big. It is big, but it's underdeveloped strategy in the core areas. I would actually like to see the secondary plan for the rail lands spelled out instead of like captured under. Again, that's one of those ones where I feel we can be a little tighter. It is vague.
So that could easily be an action step under that clause that you just read, certainly. Because we know we have to get to the secondary plan on the railway lands before the next steps could happen. Okay? Well, councillor Wookiee?
Thanks, your worship. Just one more thing. Somebody said something that brought this to mind, arts and culture. I would love to know what other cities roughly our size and maybe a little bit bigger than us. And I mean, what we're going to become, what they do in terms of coordination of arts and culture. How do they promote that? I mean, it's so difficult because there's different groups who have very different objectives and ways of looking at things. And it's, you know, you know, I, Laura Warnke and I have had conversations about even trying to get different kinds of artists together to agree on stuff. It's, it's very difficult. But I don't see a whole lot. I see it in there, but I don't see a whole lot on arts and culture planning and arts and culture incubator, whatever you want to say, but what, what can we do reasonably to help incubate arts and culture? So that's that one. Thanks.
City manager on that. It's a, it's something else we do discussing budget.
Sure. And through, through you, your worship. So, so you know, you question what other municipalities do. A lot of municipalities that are approaching this size or larger than this, they, they do arts, culture, and I think councillor Peters will bring up heritage, arts, culture, heritage, master planning. So what they'll do is they'll, 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 they'll basically come up with a set of policy statements and then a subsequent set of actions on what they're going to do to foster the development of arts and culture and heritage. You know, arts and culture specifically, and then heritage master planning as well in the, in the community. So our, is, is and that, that might go to councillor Gibson's point about a, a, a performing center. So, so those all fall into the, what I would call the, the broader spectrum of arts and culture. So that's something I'm happy to take away. I will admit it's a gap in this plan. I hadn't really thought about arts and culture as, as something that was, 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 was critical in this community at this time. But if, if council's saying, no, it is, and we've got, we've got a need for it, a demand for it, we can certainly give that some thought. And we can bring that forward as a potential priority for a council to consider some.
Counselor McCollie for further?
I just a comment to that, uh, because arts and culture, I believe, is captured under the city's Parks and Recreation Master Plan. So I like your idea of taking it out and and having it as a standalone.
Under who?
It would be under arts and culture. Right now it's captured under the uh Parks and Recreation Master Plan. So what I'm hearing is that, you know, with with the focus that we have on the murals and the art, we're becoming a community that artists are coming to. And so I I agree that we need to have its own uh strategy.
But what director?
I would assume that it would be under city park and recreation if it's under there now.
Yep. Good culture club.
Or tourism.
Yeah, or I'm just, I'm just asking it for the sake of where it where would end up in our plan, so. City manager?
Through you, your worship. Yeah, and I think with a lot of municipalities, as they reach that point where arts and culture becomes enough of a portfolio, it usually, um, for Sean, I think, I I think he was here for a bit. Um, it was usually fall into the economic development tourism group. Um, it usually starts in park rec, parks and recreation till sometime that it becomes large enough and 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 a standalone enough to uh to transition over to economic development in that portfolio, because it's it's viewed as something that does actually drive economic prosperity in the community. It's viewed as something that brings tourism into the community, so.
So it would come back to us under a plan from economic development, perhaps. I'm not trying to be an ass. I'm just saying, where would it go? Where does it fit so that we don't lose it? Um, and it has the priority that this council is saying it might want. I saw another hand over here. Counselor Baldwin says.
It is a small one, but I've I had it thread through much of the strategic plan and initiative. Is that we as a council previously have talked about the engagement of youth in the civic process. So in four point six point one, four point six point two, six point one. There are several ways that we can add that youth component to many of those um civic engagement pieces. Whether it's, as Council McCollie uh pulled out about Parks and Rec Master Plan, it's a way to get the youth engaged and involved. Those are some of the things that we can do, and we talked about it at collectively as a council at a council meeting. But um, how can we put it in our strategic plan?
Yep. Okay, Counselor Peters, I've ignored you long enough. If if you're there, Stephen, can come.
No, your worship, you you haven't ignored me. I've been taking notes as you've been speaking. And I've just been waiting for the opportunity to uh start to speak to specifics.
Go ahead.
Okay, well, just before I speak s- specifics, I uh, I support comments that were made on the grand the grand plan of Valley View Community Center Library. Because perhaps um, and and Michael mentioned it, it's a location. And perhaps if we're gonna be looking for a long term new Valley View Community Center Library site, maybe we should be creative and find something that can be all encompassing. But that's that's my grand plan thing, and I'll leave that to. And and I, your worship, I would just say this in general. I'm not looking for any answers tonight. My 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 goal of the comments that I'm gonna make is to flag it with staff. And that hopefully the city manager will hear what's being said. And that um, then they can look to see how they can pigeonhole the specific items that each of us are raising this evening into the long term plan, so.
Great.
I'll leave it at that. I'm gonna start with one point two uh to talking about better health, food security, et cetera. We need to flag on one point two that the role that the just coincidental, my first comment, I'm at a food bank conference. And that is the role that the St. Thomas Elgin Community Food Bank plays. And the the Food Providers Network. We need to flag these things that, you know, the library wants to go do things. Uh, and or the market wants to develop a a community kitchen. We need to know, do we need these things? And the Food Providers Network, which the food bank is part of, is a very good outlet, I think, to to deal with some of these things. But we need to, I I think as we we look at these items, how do we drill down and look at who's doing what? And I don't see the name uh St. Thomas Elgin Food Bank or Food Providers Network in here. So I flagged that under one point two. And I also flagged under one point two five, the cost to develop um a some sort of a commercial kitchen. There are private entities out there that have commercial kitchens that are licensed that we could utilize. So before we go spend money on initiatives, how do we engage the private sector? And that's going to be a theme through a lot of the comments I'm gonna make tonight is that we don't need to necessarily do all these things. There may be others that are out there, so I flagged that under one point two five.
If if you want us to try and answer those as you go, Steve?
No, no, your worship. I I I'm not looking for answers tonight. I trust that between Michael and Maria, they're gonna take these points down. Michael made a comment earlier that, you know, that you know, he can come back with the stuff, and I'm not looking for an answer tonight, your worship. I just want to make sure that the items that are on my mind, that should be part of our uh action plan, as Michael has described it. Um, and described it as any ideas that may be missed. Um, these are ideas that I think are missed, and I just want to flag them if that's okay.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Um, the uh one point four childcare. Well, we need to, I I think, include in that, um, what what is the role that the private childcare provider network can play in that? What is private home based childcare? What can they play in that? Again, I don't think it's government that needs to be the answer to fix all of our challenges and the 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 issues that we have go forward. And I would like to see an underlying theme um throughout this whole uh plan going forward. Um, how others can can do it, like we've been looking at for housing with rent subsidies. That's a great way. Let somebody else build the building, and we can help subsidize it. So I just want to have that underlined. Us uh, I'll go to uh priority two, uh, two point one. Uh, Wellness Act of Community, et cetera. Um, Community Gardens, we just had a report come to before us at uh at city council at our last meeting. Um, I think Community Gardens should be part of that because Community Gardens can help to support Wellness Act of Living, et cetera, et cetera, but also to help to support issues that come up in one point two when it comes to community food needs. Um, I'm gonna flip forward. Um, I'm really pleased to see the underlying theme of the approach to the Ontarians with Disabilities Act throughout everything, because I think that that's really important, that we we have that. Not only do we have a climate change environment lens to things, but an accessibility lens to things as well, too. Um, the welcoming of uh supporting newcomers and immigrants under uh four point five. Under that, I would just say, um, and I've raised this one before, we used to have a an amazing program in St. Thomas called Welcome Wagon. That, you know, welcome new members to the community, but also told people what's going on. What role can we play working with the realtors, et cetera, to welcome newcomers to St. Thomas? To make sure that they understand um what we do. And and how do we can, how can we do that from a uh, a culturally um respective perspective of that we, if if we're gonna communicate to newcomers, communicating in English and French may not necessarily be the answer. The face of St. Thomas is changing. And uh, we need to, we need to look at that. And and that sort of goes into my next point that I'm gonna raise on four point six. I I need to, I I I want to personally express uh, I don't like the term remove obstacles that prevent equity deserving groups and newcomers, immigrants from fully participating in the city's economy, community and civic engagement process. Well, can somebody tell me what these obstacles are that we're putting in place? And I I just, I I want to see us be a welcoming uh community. And i- it if if somebody's identified obstacles. Well, I and I did see some things that came in from the Stillup Report uh earlier on, but I I still had, I don't know all the details of where they garnered their information, but um I'm all about removing obstacles and red tape, but um I I consider myself and I consider our community of St. Thomas a very welcoming place, so I just would ask perhaps some word wordsmithing on that one. Um, I'm gonna jump forward now to priority six, environmental stewardship. Um, we talk under six point one of preserving, protecting and expanding cities' urban forests, green space, naturalization initiatives and biodiversity. Well, I think that that, whether it's under environmental stewardship or this is under a separate heading. Um, I want to see us preserve, protect and expand the city's initiative to protect our heritage. Whether that is developing the secondary plan for the railway lands, whether that is finding ways that we can better help to support the St. Thomas Elgin Art Center, whether how we can go beyond a community of St. Thomas of forty five thousand people. We do not have a museum that um recognizes the past of St. Thomas. Um, how, we do not have an archives that supports and preserves the records of our community. We digitize our records and we destroy our originals. Um, these are things that the county is already doing, and and this fits into other things that can be talked about. So I would like to see six point one uh expanded to to look at how we can uh better play a role uh in heritage, in our museums, in our galleries, in our archives. And that would include cemeteries. And thank you, Counselor Gibson, for raising cemeteries. Um, I want to um go into uh six point six, your worship, under uh sustainable mobility options to EV charging stations. Um, how do we engage the private sector in this? Every new development that goes on and every new house that's built in St. Thomas going forward, every new apartment that's going for, being built going forward. The onus shouldn't be on us to 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 put these EV charging stations in. It needs to be on them. And I just want to see how, again, once again, I uh, a a common theme for me is the role of the private sector and what all of these things that we are being asked to do. Um, I really um was pleased to see the effect of govern, governance and ensuring accountability and transparency. Um, I look forward to seeing the uh, the the council staff relations policy. Um, but uh accountability and transparency needs to go both ways. And um, we need to find a better way to engage the public. We we have virtually no media anymore. Um, uh, and and how do we better engage? Because I think we are pretty accountable and transparent. Some people may not agree with that, but they may not know that we are. Um, and it's because of our lack of media, so um, I I just want to uh talk about that. Seven point two of establishing uh measurable performance indicators. Um, it's all gonna cost money. Um, and uh, I I just want to make sure that we're we're conscious of that. And even into seven point three, I wholeheartedly support vote voter engagement. But it's not just all about en- engaging the youth to get involved. We have a huge percentage of the population that's probably age sixty five and under that is not engaged. So we need to have a a broad range uh strategy going forward. Um, uh, beyond just trying to encourage under seven point five students to be actively engaged in the decision making forums. Um, and empowering uh, under eight point three, empowering employees to participate meaningful and skilled uh professional development opportunities. I I I wholly support that. Um, I I think that sometimes our employees on the ground know better than we are ever gonna know or our managers are ever gonna know um what we're doing right and what we're doing wrong. And how do we incentivize that type of thing to go forward? Um, and I'm gonna close with this one, your worship. Uh, well, not necessarily. Uh, nine point one. Um, I look forward to hearing how we're gonna develop that financial strategic plan going forward. Because none of this plan is ever gonna be implemented without that. Um, le- eleven point one reciprocal partnerships. I would like to see us clearly state that we want to work closely with the County of Elgin and our neighboring municipalities of Central Elgin and Southwood. And we need to include school boards in these reciprocal partnerships going forward. And um, the last one uh that I'm gonna comment on is eleven point three, developing a business case for a new position of community relations coordinator. I think this is one I look forward to discussions at budget time on this one. Because I think this could be a position that's useful to not only the city of St. Thomas, but the whole of the community. Thanks, worship. Those are the points I wanted to make. And as I said, I'm not looking for any answers tonight. I just wanted to flag them. If Michael or staff have any um clarification that were required for anything that I raised, happy to do that later. Thank you.
Well, thank you, uh, Counselor Peters. And if I could, I can share in all of the conversations tonight, and I thank you all, we 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 didn't say no to anything. We added some different yeses, as Counselor Peter just did, a number of words that may be added. But I didn't hear anybody say stroke out this action. We're not doing it. All right, now, when we get to first budget, we may actually have some of those conversations. Because some of the things we did talk or try to add will actually actually cost money. And we'll have to decide, is it, is it our interest to, is it in the interest of all of the citizens across St. Thomas to do them? But thank you for doing the great work of accepting what our staff and what our directors and what our city managers put together to come to us tonight for us to start forward, even with some word changes, and we've got those, we 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 heard those. So o- other than that, further questions or comments on the steps that are next? Very well done that we could get to this point through a little bit of looking at what's been said and add some great big things to, or at least talk about some great big things to. And we'll know that come the rest of twenty twenty four, our job is to make this work. Counselor Wookiee?
Thank you, your worship. Um, this is from Michael because it specifically to you, because this popped in my head, having been in the health unit. Um, the Health and All Policies um document. I would love to see when we're, if in Taylor perhaps for you as well, to take a look at that and and see how that can be layered into this. Because that I passionately care about that night, and I think that that is something that is always in the back of my mind is how do our decisions impact directly health? Thank you.
Okay. As a, as a closing on the plan at this point, Counselor Baldwin says.
I would just like to emphasize uh something that has been brought up steadily over the last few months is how well this council works together.
Oof, I brag about it. It's incredible.
That being said, I think it's also due to the fact that we have some great staff. And that is going to help us move forward with the strategic plan as it has been presented and allow it not to be that document that sits on the shelf collecting dust. And it will be something that we all can engage in and move forward together with. Thank you.
Excellent words. And and city manager and I also talked about how well we share. What we need to do going forward is share this with our neighbors, too. Steve mentioned it in the intermunicipal relationship, but share with the County of Elgin, share with our neighbors, share with with others what we're looking at. Because I'm okay if they steal good ideas and and move them forward, too. This group has been pretty good at moving some big things forward. So Counselor Baldwin says, thank you for saying so, but I was bragging to Mayor Morgan last night in London that he could get way more done if he had my counsel.
What did his C A O say about that?
Uh, this, yeah, wasn't present at the event, so we'll be okay. It unless he goes back and rats me out, I guess we're okay. Sorry, you have a motion?
Uh, your worship, just to reiterate that uh the motion, the second part of the motion was that council be requested to provide initial feedback and input, which it had, and direct administration to finalize the strategic plan, action plan for full council endorsement at a later meeting date.
Okay, further discussion? We've had a lot, seeing none. All those in favor of that? Pass, carried. Next item.
Uh, your worship, the next item, um, we have received letters from the YMCA of Southwestern Ontario, the St. Thomas Jumbo Jet Swim Team, and the Talbot Trail Physiotherapy supporting the construction of a new recreation and aquatics facility in St. Thomas.
Great. We thank them for their support. Counselor Baldwin says?
Do we need it moved?
It really isn't a motion. It's an acceptance of their letters.
Thank you. Is any further letters that come in, could they also? Thank you. Is any further letters that come in, could they also be referred to the committee?
Uh, through council to the committee or directly to the committee, either way you would like it?
Directly to the committee.
You got it.
Thank you.
And we thank them for their support and their ongoing discussion in our community on the aquatic center or recreational complex.
Thank you, worship. Uh, no further items on the agenda at this time. I do have a motion for adjournment.
Wait, I have some new business. Is it okay?
Your worship, as long as it pertains to the strategic planning process, certainly.
Well, a lot of strategic planning took place over the last twenty-four hours to allow a number of great hockey fans in this community to meet at the, at the Railway Museum to watch the seventh game of the Stanley Cup. And so I'm sure it fits into our strategic planning process that, that that is occurring tonight. And so a number of, of people worked very hard for it to happen. Doors will open at seven. Um, and a, uh, seventh game of the Stanley Cup will take place with a number of viewers. So if you're watching at home.
Your worship?
Steve?
Your worship, just on, just on that point, I, I certainly do think it, it fits under the strategic planning process of the development and need for a new, some sort of type of community center, which could very well be the Railway Museum. Um, because we need a venue like this to watch hockey games, basketball games on the street, like a number of us, uh, remember. So I would, I, I think this fits very nicely into the action plan this evening.
Well, thank you for noticing another way it fits the strategic plan. That's, that's very excellent. So, thank you very much. Um, I, I won't try and do my other, uh, meth, my other new business then. I'll leave it because I can't get a strategic plan around it. So it'll be next time.
Okay, your worship, we don't have a meeting until July fifteenth. Can it wait until then?
Yes.
Okay, great. At this time, I have motion for adjournment, moved by Counselor Baldwin Sands, seconded by Counselor Herbert.
Questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? Any opposed? Carried, we are adjourned. Thanks, Steve, for joining us.